PM and visitors may obtain a request to be heard or from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. In accordance with policy, the request to be heard forms must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to be ordering at the discretion of the board president. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you are able to hear any discussion. Pursuant to section eighty-four dash fourteen eleven of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District zero 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 one and the Board of Educational Services Unit number nineteen will be held on Monday, March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one at six thirty PM in the board meeting room of the Teacher Administrative Center, thirty-two fifteen Cummings Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the administrative building during regular working hours. Pursuant to section eighty-four dash fourteen twelve of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the board meeting room on the north wall. Please join us in staying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice President Erdnberger will lead us in the OPS vision and mission statement.
The OPS vision is every student, every day, prepared for success. The mission is to prepare all students for success in college, career, and life.
Okay, um, roll call, Mr. Ray. Here. You're not here. Here.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Present.
Is there a motion to excuse Mr. Snow's absence?
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Snipes and seconded by Mr. Head. Mr. Ray, roll call. Aye.
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 Okay, next is school spotlight with Mr. Maskell. Good evening, Mr. Maskell.
Good evening, Dr. Holman, Vice President Erdnberger, members of the board, and Superintendent Logan. Our OPS Proud Spotlight this evening features the students and staff of our Blackburn program recognized with an award by Nebraska Arts. Teacher leader Kathy Nelson, art teacher Hillary George, and two of our students talk about the impact of engaging students' creativity in education. Students and staff from Blackburn have worked with others at UNO, the Jocelyn Museum, and more as part of their work.
The Arts Award is an award that celebrates art that has an impact, you know, art as an important humanity, art that says something about who we are in this space and time.
Honored, proud because our students work so hard. Anytime that our community recognizes the voices of our students, it counts as a huge success in my mind. So I was incredibly proud just to see our students' voices get shared even further out to the community beyond the walls of Blackburn. One of my favorite projects in particular would be the North Omaha Learning Community Center. We created a mural with a color theory class from UNO to go up kind of in the entryway of the North Omaha Learning Community Center. And it was really, really just an awesome collaboration. Then we got to install this really wonderful mural that is still, that's still there.
Every painting has a story. Every, every artwork, every piece of artwork has something in it that somebody else will see and it'll either, it'll hit them the same way or it'll open their eyes to something else.
How do you express myself and write anything on my mind? I could just draw it and, you know, they'll have to tell anybody about my feelings. I'll just put my feelings into artwork and see how it turns out.
Congratulations to the students and staff of Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Maskell. Moving on to board and superintendent communications, Mr. Roberts.
Good evening. President Holman, Vice President Erdnberger, Superintendent Logan, members of the board. The financial statements for the period ended January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one and been finalized and submitted for your review.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Logan.
Good evening, President Holman, members of the board, those in here in person and those watching the live stream. Following last week's board workshop, tonight's agenda includes an information item that will provide additional context about the work that has gone into the updates proposed within our new high school student assignment plan, which is planned to go into effect during the fall of two thousand and twenty-two. The plan's design is a result of in-depth study and analysis conducted by a cross-functional district team led by our research and student and community services departments, namely Mr. Casey Hughes and Dr. Ann McFarland. The process, which began in two thousand and nineteen, incorporates information gathered from our school leaders and families as part of engagement sessions conducted over the past year and a half. Last month, we conducted, we concluded, rather, a series of four family engagement and feedback sessions held virtually in English and Spanish. One session was held solely in Spanish. Sessions were offered during the evening, one on a Saturday, and one was held during the lunch hour to provide a range of engagement opportunities and options for our families. No matter where a student lives, all families have choice and can apply to attend any district high school. The plan will determine transportation eligibility and priority high schools available to students. We look forward to sharing more during tonight's presentation. Vaccinations continue through Douglas County for school districts employees. Though this effort is led by the Health Department, we are connecting interested staff members with appointments through the county. We conducted a survey back in December that indicated eighty percent of staff who responded intend to get the vaccination. We are eager for staff to receive vaccinations. This will bring us another step closer to normalcy. We will continue to keep staff updated about when they are eligible to make an appointment and which health department site they can visit to get vaccinated. As the number of Douglas County residents vaccinated increases, we continue to encourage students, staff, and our families to remain steadfast in wearing face coverings, social distancing, particularly as we head into spring break next week. Recent weather may not have signaled that spring is due for arrival later this month, but it is close and spring break is our friendly reminder. For Omaha Public Schools students and staff, spring break starts Monday, March eighth, and runs through Friday, March twelfth. Throughout the break, we will continue our Monday Meals to Go curbside meal distribution to provide meals during the recess. Meals are available at no cost to families. There are two kudos this evening. In conclusion, I'd like to extend congratulations to Mike Hogan, afternoon radio host at KIOS, for his recognition as Meteor Partner of the Year by the Public Relations Society of America, Nebraska Chapter, and to North High sophomore Tyler Stewart for earning recognition as a Nebraska Class A, two-hundred-and-twenty-pound wrestling champion. A job well done to both of you. This concludes my remarks for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. Colleagues. Ms. Crackey.
I would like to highlight summer school. Last time, we discussed summer school a lot, and I'm sure you're all getting some information on your school webpage. And this is an opportunity for students to do some of the things that weren't able to be done during the school year or were not accomplished. And I want you to know that we don't only need the students there and the teachers helping them. We need the parents, the grandparents, everybody. Because if we're going to be going forward in the fall and they're going to know what they need to know for the next grade, learning those math facts and some of the reading things that they will be doing is just essential. So I want to challenge all of us to help them with that this summer. People like to say, well, you had them this many hours during the day. I guess they don't realize that during the day, we also have other subjects and breaks and things going on, so you can't get it all done at school. But with those flashcards, if you don't have them, ask the district for them, because I've been told that we have sent them out to all families at some point, and they can still get more of them from the district. But I hope you can meet that challenge. I'm going to look forward to knowing how the end of the testing of summer school goals and how ready they are for the next grade. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Crackey. Vice President Erdnberger.
Um, I, again, in my never-ending quest to make our actions up here make some sense, I want to direct your attention, if you would please, on the agenda to the claims, where are they? One point four, five, and six. And that, again, the claims section, I mean, the consent agenda are things that we've, you know, separately or in other forms have reviewed before we get here. And just so you know, we've changed the titles to those so you know which ones are coming out of what. The claims A is coming out of school general, I mean, district general funds. Claims B are the funds that we are responsible for but are being remitted by the various schools for their activities. And claim C has to do with, as you can see here, expenditures on behalf of board members or their related organizations. If you are a regular attendee, you know that Mrs. Cassidy frequently abstains from that one. That's because she is on the board of the Omaha Schools Foundation, which is funded out of claim C. So it's not that she's up to anything particularly interesting. She just can't vote on that. The other thing I was going to point out, just because I thought it was interesting and therefore I hope you do too, is that one point nine is talking about a lease with United States Cellular Operating Company of Greater Iowa. And you might wonder what that is. Well, it's that big honkin' tower, cell tower in the, in the parking lot at Burke, I'm sorry, at Benson High School. So that is on our property. We are leasing it to these people. They keep making improvements to it, and someday when we get it back, it'll be worth a lot more than it was when we started. So think of it as an investment. And I think that's everything I want to cover. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Erdnberger. And I would like to quickly give a shout out to the students and staff and teachers at Belvedere Elementary School. I had the opportunity to read to them last week for Black History Month and had a fantastic, delightful time during my, my reading visit there. And the students asked such wonderful, engaging questions. And I did mention that I would ask Dr. Logan a particular question that was asked of me. And the students wanted to know, and particularly, why they have paper straws now. I gave them my answer, but I told them I would check with you just to ask the boss lady.
They're more environmentally friendly.
Ooh, I was right.
Trying not to fill up our oceans with plastic straws anymore, so.
Perfect. That's what I told them, but I told them I would check just to be on the safe side. So thank you for answering that. And then also, I wanted to give kudos to Omaha Public Schools, the district leadership team, and all the work that you have been doing to get our next level summer program up and going. Every Friday, I sit on the Board of Directors Counsel Great City Schools phone calls, and that's all the urban school districts that have fifty thousand-plus students within their school districts. And we are certainly ahead of the curve with regard to our counterparts and the work that we have been doing and getting prepared for our recovery plan and starting with our summer school planning. And I have shared what our district has already planned in detail, and the other districts have come and called and emailed multiple times wondering what we have done, how we are planning, and so on and so forth. And so I'm very proud to be a part of this district and share the information that we have done so far with our counterparts across the nation. So thank you so much for all the work that you have put in so far for our next level summer school program. Mr. Smith.
Thank you for mentioning the Belvedere thing. I also read to the Belvedere students, and they were delightful. I really enjoyed it. And since then, I've been, I guess, I promised a pizza party to the classrooms, and so tomorrow pizza party's on Mr. Smith.
I'm glad you remembered, Mr. Smith. That should be fun. All righty, moving on now to public comment. The next item is public comment, and masks are required to be worn in order to speak during public comment. If you are not wearing a mask, a mask will be provided to you at the podium to wear while speaking. We have eleven speakers who have submitted request to speak forms. The board has adopted policy eighty-three forty-six, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have thirty seconds remaining. If you are in need of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know, and one will be provided for you. We understand that people have strong feelings about the issues they come to speak about. We ask that you respect the opinions of all who speak and that you refrain from applause and other outbursts during the presentations. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not mention the student or staff member by name and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray. He will assist us in looking into those types of specifics for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Mr. Ray. He will make sure each member of the board gets a copy. As a reminder, we ask that you please spell your name and state your address before you begin your public comment. It is now six forty-six PM, and our first speaker is Lisa Winton.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Lisa Winton, L-I-S-A-W-I-N-T-O-N. I live at fifty-five oh-four Howard Street, six-eight one oh-six. Good evening, Dr. Logan and members of the Omaha School Board. My name is Lisa Winton, and my husband Keith and I are proud OPS parents. We are not originally from Omaha, and almost every time we speak to family and friends, we tell them how lucky we feel to have our children attend OPS schools. I am here today to express my extreme concern about the proposed changes at the high school level. While the switch to a district-wide block scheduling model and the pathway academy system are being promoted as improvements, I have serious reservations about the effects such changes will have on our students. To put it plainly, what issues are these changes trying to solve? What will be fixed by a district-wide pivot to block scheduling and career academies? Researching the history of block scheduling in OPS, I see that this issue has been discussed for years. Proponents of traditional block and modified block scheduling have argued passionately about the advantages of each system, and each time, the decision has been made not to force all schools into a one-size-fits-all approach. So I have these questions. What is different now? What evidence is there that decisively shows that a block schedule is superior to other systems? Block scheduling has been part of OPS for decades, so there must be studies that show a district-wide move to block scheduling will improve attendance, test scores, graduation rates, and other metrics. Can you please make those studies available to us? Why do these changes need to be implemented in all high schools? OPS is a very diverse district with a wide variety of students and learning styles. Doesn't forcing all students to adhere to block scheduling deny any student who performs better with shorter class periods the best learning model for him or her? My children are current and former Central High students. Central currently operates on a modified block schedule. Classes like science labs have longer sessions, but subjects like math, foreign language, and English meet daily. For students like my children, this daily reinforcement has been critical to their mastering material. For them, classroom exposure every day is what they need to succeed, and we are grateful that Central has this schedule. To declare that every high school in the district must conform to block scheduling eliminates choice for families like mine. My current Central student will not learn as well under block scheduling. I don't understand why all schools must have block scheduling when there are significant numbers of students who would learn better under the traditional or modified block model. Block scheduling eliminates choice because it only allows students to take eight classes each semester, and students are required to have a designated lunch period. At Central, many of the top students currently elect to take nine classes without a designated lunch. My older students were able to explore additional classes in math, social studies, science, and more because of the current central structure. By pigeonholing all schools into block scheduling, my youngest child will be denied opportunities to take these additional enriching courses that could open his eyes to exciting new worlds that he would not be exposed to otherwise. Block scheduling represents more rigidity and less choice. The district-wide move to a pathway academy system also concerns me because I believe it will place too much emphasis on directing students into a career pathway at the expense of a general broad-based liberal arts education. Because OPS is a large, vibrant, and diverse district, I know there are students for whom the pathway academy model will be beneficial and preferred. But there are also students like my high school freshmen who are excited about experiencing everything he can while in high school and who would be stifled by being forced to decide at age fifteen what his career trajectory is. The stated mission on the OPS website is to prepare all students to excel in college, career, and life. I submit to you that the proposed changes, which try to implement a one-size-fits-all educational model across every high school in the district, are counter to these ideals and actually eliminate choice for a significant number of students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Winton. Next, we have Tiffany Hobbs-Banks.
Good evening. My name is Tiffany Hobbs-Banks. That's T-I-F-F-A-N-Y-H-O-B-B-S hyphenated B-A-N-K-S. My address, four-one-four North one-eightheenth Plaza, Apartment Nine, Omaha, six-eight one-five-four. I am here today because of the decision to not allow seniors that are remote learning to go to prom. My daughter is a remote learning student, not of her choice because of her health, but I keep her home because of mine. I am a person with disabilities, so my child needs to stay home for my health. I would like to take you back to two thousand twenty, March. My daughter prepared for prom. She still has her dress in her closet. She was devastated when COVID hit and they couldn't go to prom. Again, that prom dress still stands in her closet and it's plastic. She is ready to go. So imagine her devastation now, to get an email and to be notified she can't go to prom because her mother has to keep her home because of my disabilities. I, I can see why you may want to keep her home and say, well, if it's not safe enough for you to go to school, it's not safe enough for you to go to prom. But I would submit to you that the venues are different based off of the email. We're not talking about students in a narrow classroom or a narrow hallway or several in classrooms. We're talking about an open-door event with not the entire school body, but juniors and seniors. So I would submit to you what would be the access to prom for families with disabilities? It should not be an option to just go ahead and take my daughter's senior prom from her. Think about two thousand twenty. These students have already paid so much. They've already had so many milestones already taken from them. Why take this one too? What will be next? Her commencement? I ask you to give her a choice. Give her a choice whether she can go to prom. Let us decide whether that safety hazard is there. So I would ask for you to reconsider and allow my daughter, her milestone of her senior prom, to go to prom. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Barton Hooper.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Barton Hooper, B-A-R-T-O-N-H-O-O-P-E-R. I live at one-one-three North Fifty-fourth Street here in Omaha. I live at one-one-three North Fifty-fourth Street here in Omaha. I'm here to express my concerns regarding the district-wide switch to block scheduling and the adoption of the academies and pathways curriculum. It is my opinion that doing so is unnecessary, untimely, and worst of all reduces options for students, teachers, and administrators in the near and long term. In short, these moves will increase the overall fragility of our school system at a time when we should be building in more anti-fragility. While Dr. Logan and others have expressed that this plan has been well documented and communicated, the public record does not support this assertion. While I'm certain the staff are well-prepared and believe they are pursuing the best policy choice for the district, this decision was made during the year of greatest change due to COVID for our students and teachers, one which we will not overcome for many years. The board only had a workshop last week to learn more about this program. Why wasn't this done prior to when students and parents were required to choose a school? A choice which entails greater risk given what can happen if your fourteen- or fifteen-year-old changes their mind. In February two thousand and twenty, the district's long-term strategic plan was approved. Nowhere in this document is the concept of block scheduling or academies and pathways mentioned. The only near-term deliverable related to the academics is the Intervention Indicator Dashboard, which is to be deployed this June. Shortly after the plan was announced, COVID-nineteen hit, and I can only imagine the time and resources taken from the staff and this board for longer-term planning. The only communication received by parents prior to the winter two thousand and twenty-one announcement was a hard-to-identify survey in an email that was confusing at best. This lone email refers only to a SWOT analysis about the implementation and communication of the changes. Dr. Logan has been quoted as saying because of the pandemic, "We must move even more quickly." This is the opposite of what we should be doing to our students and, just as importantly, our exhausted teachers and staff. We are asking them to work through summer in numbers we have never intended, to come back and completely revamp their lesson plans to accommodate block scheduling, and then also to begin planning a massive change in curriculum. We have been told that little will change, except that academies or pathways will consume most of a student's electives, while the number of those choices declines due to block scheduling. The specifics of this are unclear to administrators, teachers, counselors, and thousands of confused parents and students. The idea pushed by staff that we are not implementing this program in the two thousand and twenty-one school year is difficult to believe. Once all freshmen go through the freshman academy, all the momentum, and not to mention dollars, will be focused on moving forward. The very concerns you have heard from your constituents these past few weeks will then be echoed back to you by OPS staff, that there isn't time to change the path, that there were too many unknowns, few specifics, and that accountability will suffer. There will be no choice but to change at that point. There will be no choice to change is what I mean. This brings me to my final point. The district is effectively pursuing a burning platform decision to move all schools to the same schedule in all-or-nothing academy and pathways programs. While I admit there is no clear evidence that either policy choice is definitively poor, it is also true that there's no definitive proof of their superiority. This should give each of you pause. Which is better? A system that allows for experimentation and options for students in the district as a whole? One that allows for time to pass to see which works best for this district in this city? Or one which requires a massive, singular change where a reversal will take years and if the policy is wrong, will hurt all students and provide no alternative path? I evaluate this program and change in depth. If you must go forward today, at least do it only for a portion of the district. Perhaps the academy's already established in the two new schools, but please, preserve options so there is an out. Thirty seconds. Untested and opaque strategy turns out to be, in fact, the poor policy it looks to be. If I am wrong, OPS has lost a year or two at most for few schools which are generally decent to good shape. If you are wrong, OPS will be set back at least a decade. It will be two thousand and thirty before you can get even back to today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Julie Keifer. Keifer, I'm sorry. How do you pronounce your last name?
It's Keifer.
Keifer.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Hello, Julie Keifer. J U L I E K I E F E R. I live at fifty-one-eighteen California Street. I have three students in OPS. I have a sophomore, a freshman, and a first grader. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to discuss my thoughts and concerns around the rollout of the pathways and career academies programs at OPS. To give you a little bit of background, I worked in change management roles for fifteen to twenty years. I completely understand change is hard. It's generally met with resistance and fear, so I don't come to you not aware of those situations. I also know that a typical process for change management is you begin, you collaborate with small groups, and you establish a path forward using cross-functional conversations. Then you move into a phase where you sell the plan to the larger audience. You have to establish, why are we doing this? You have to gain buy-in. You prepare them for the change. There are leading indicators you can use to understand if that why is resonating with these people and if they are prepared to change. I don't know what these leading indicators are you're using, but I would love to know more about that. Only when those indicate that there is an understanding and there is an adoption do you move forward with implementation. The second step in this process is where I have significant concerns. An example is when my son, who is currently a freshman, went to enroll in classes for next year. He was advised to pick a pathway. When he explained that none of the options would fit his interests or strengths, he was told that they're just telling kids like him, those that aren't really interested in anything his school has to offer, to enroll in entrepreneurship. That would just be the easiest thing for him to do, even though he's not really interested in it. I do not believe this is a sign of a change that is supported or adopted by the staff Are we really setting this change up for success by rushing to implement it with details not worked out properly and students not educated enough to make a smart choice? How does the district and the board plan to measure that students, staff, and parents understand and are ready for these changes? The speed with which this change is being implemented is reckless. The students will be impacted the most are the current freshmen and eighth graders who are caught in the middle of an implementation that has not been given time to establish a strong foundation to support a successful rollout. Teachers have not been given adequate time to adjust curriculum, get themselves ready for such a large change, let alone provide the courage and assurance to students that this will be in their best interest. COVID has disrupted so many things for our students and staff. Give everyone time and space to heal and recover without the added pressure of a major change this coming academic year. This is also impacting my son's ability to take the electives that he is interested in. Between the move to block scheduling and the required pathway elective, he has left cutting classes that he was interested in exploring in college. The current freshmen are unusually affected by this change as they selected their high schools before anything about this change was announced, but now they are still required to make a selection. At the very least, we should not impact students who have already enrolled in a school and are not interested in that pathway or academy that's offered there. The bottom line is, we need more time to work through the details, answer questions, build support, and make adjustments where needed. After many years of coaching various teams through change.
One minute.
I recognize the warning signs that this change is not headed in the right direction. You have a chance to acknowledge and listen to those warning signs and make adjustments. It doesn't mean it can't be implemented, but you need to establish support from the school staff so they can help the students and parents through their questions and concerns. You will need students, staff, and parents to be patient and understanding through the changes.
Thirty seconds.
But if they do not feel listened to or their input is not valued, they will resist. I ask you to use whatever power you have to slow down these changes. Give them a chance to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Jennifer Simpson.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening, Madam President, Madam Vice President, Superintendent Dr. Logan, and members of the board. My name is Jennifer Simpson, J E N N I F E R S I M P S O N, like the show, and I live at twenty-two thirty-two North One Hundred and Sixty-third Street. My husband and I chose OPS because I loved my own amazing experience at Central High School. We wanted our children to be a part of the diversity and center community that we felt only OPS could provide, and we are very proud to have our oldest son at Central as a ninth grader this year. We want to stand with OPS and fight for every kid to get a good education. But as we are reeling and still recovering from this past year with COVID and all of its disruptions, OPS families are now faced with new hurdles as we learn of changes to the transportation plan and, most recently, of the programming changes coming to the high schools starting next year. I can't disagree with wanting to help kids that are struggling in high school and to improve the district's graduation rates. I am struggling with the concept of implementing that all students must identify a career pathway or academy at the end of their freshman year and knowing that their neighborhood school, the only one that you're guaranteed to attend, may not align with the student's interests or needs. In our desire to help students at risk of not graduating, are we holding back kids who are excelling now by limiting their choices and options that academies and pathways introduce? Are kids going to pick a path that is wrong for them because they have a bus ride or don't want to say goodbye to their middle-school friends? If this is what we are requiring of students, we should be starting this conversation before they choose a high school. But how many freshmen, let alone thirteen- or fourteen-year-olds, know what they want to do at that age? The high school selection process was challenging enough for my son as he looked at all the school offerings and opportunities without taking into consideration what career interests he would like to pursue. Academics, sports, and extracurricular activities were all things he considered when making his school choice. That choice seems that much more critical now when you align career academies and pathways around a student's high school education and selection, sorry. How much more guidance will be given to eighth graders making their selection to minimize the need to transfer after their freshman year? Because my son has a variety of interests fitting all the classes into his schedule while also on the Ivy track is already a challenge. He wasn't ready to give up art or music his freshman year and opted to defer his P.E. class later so he could take both. I think of other kids who may want to take more than one class in performing arts, taking arts not as a pathway but something to enrich their high school experience, and I hope they don't have to make that choice. Moving to block scheduling at Central means some kids will have to let something go. But now is the time when they should take those classes. Once in college, students most likely won't pay to take classes if it does not directly relate to the field that they want to study. I guess I don't understand why this is a one-size-fits-all students. Academies and pathways seem like a great concept for kids who know what they want to do or for kids that may need a little nudge in some direction. Are the academies even valuable if they become too big? Are we limiting how many students can be in a given academy? If a student is not ready to declare a career interest, it seems like they should still have the option to remain undeclared and pursue the necessary classes to meet graduation requirements along with electives that they are interested in. And when your neighborhood school is an academy school, you may not want to pursue classes that you already are not interested in, but also have every core class take on that same academy slant. You also don't necessarily want to be kept to the same group of kids for the majority of your day. High school should be a chance to meet different people who may not have the same interest as you do. Now, not only are you choosing a career path, but what students you will surround yourself with. The changes being implemented are significant and will have a lasting impact on the district. And I feel like I'm a fairly informed parent. You guys probably see me enough here, but I was still blindsided by these changes that go into effect next fall. At this point, I don't feel like I have enough knowledge about the programs that will be offered and the classes that will be no longer available as a result of the changes to evaluate whether we will still get a high-caliber, college-ready liberal arts curriculum. Again, I agree a hundred percent.
Thirty seconds.
That students at risk of not graduating should be a priority. If we're saying equity means everyone needs to participate in academies and pathways because we need to step up for these kids, then okay, I support OPS. But we need to realize that the reason for making the switch for every student to select an academy or pathway may not be a compelling enough argument for all families to stay in OPS high schools when other school districts in the metro area do not have similar requirements to graduate.
That's time.
Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak in your service to our community.
Thank you, Mrs. Simpson. Next, we have Liz Cook.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Liz Cook, L I Z C O O K. Address fifty-five-eleven North One Thirty-Ninth Avenue. President Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, Superintendent Logan, members of the board and guests, thank you for hearing me tonight. My name is Liz Cook. I live in Sub-District Five. I have two elementary students and one middle-school student, so I'm looking into the future. I'm a proud OPS grad, K through twelve, and I'm a third-generation graduate of Omaha Public Schools myself. Proud to have fourth generation soon. Since the announcement of changes occurred in January, I started my research. I started reading articles. I started researching the website. I started asking questions. I started inquiring with my school board member. It was important to me. I needed to know, what are we solving for? Why are we making these changes? This is important to me for not just my kids, but for the district, which I was a part of and am a part of. When I look at the block scheduling versus nine-class period, I ask myself, what data and metrics do we have? What helps us make decisions that are the best for students? To me, we need more data. I can't find it, and I hope you can. Please share it with us. Why aren't there options for students? For example, I don't see it as a one-size-fits-all. This is really what's best for each student's needs, and I believe we can actually have both within the district. It is a matter of choice. If we have a mix between block and nine-period scheduling, students can make the choice that's best for their learning styles and best for their abilities. Let's move on to academies and pathways. I researched the July twenty-twenty survey, and in the survey, I didn't read of massive change. I read of questions around SWOT analysis. I read of introduction of words like pathways and academies. But when I read that survey, I didn't think, wow, what's coming? What's going to change? To me, it was kind of vague and unclear about its purpose. So I can see why members of the community either chose not to answer or didn't really know what they were answering. Regarding academies and pathways, can we use some of the data from Bryan and from Benson, where we have academies and pathway programs? Have they been successful? Are they doing what we intend them to do? To me, that's a really good decision point in how we decide if this is something we would consider rolling out across the district. What does success look like? What is the cost to the district? I don't just mean implementation costs, because if we implement a program like this, it's going to be on and on and years and years of funding. I just want to make sure we're making the best decision and we're really aware of the cost to the district. What is good for some is not good for all. When I think about academies and pathways, I know there are people that will benefit from them, no question. My comment is, I'm worried that there are some that won't benefit from them, and I want people and students within OPS to have a choice, a choice to impact their future. I want students to have the option of liberal arts, options to really explore in high school, the way I was able to explore. I feel like I learned so much here that I use every single day in my life and career. Metrics. Can we please consider more serious metrics besides just high school graduation rate? I think the metrics are at eighty-five percent or close to eighty-five percent when you look at the graduation rate.
One minute.
I think we can do more. We can consider ACT scores. We consider state testing scores. There's more that we can do. Teachers, students, and families, we're exhausted. We need time to catch up. We just can't handle change after change. So what is my ask of you as board members and of the district? Let's delay implementation. Let's research. Let's research this further.
Thirty seconds.
Let's make the best decision for all. Not maybe one-size-fits-all, but let's really make the best decision for all students. Consider perspectives. Whether you've heard from different members of the community, et cetera, constituents, keep in mind and just understand, we're coming to you not to complain. We're coming to you to help the district make the best possible decision for the future. Thank you for your time and consideration. I really appreciate all that you do.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Next, we have Donnie Johnson.
Good evening.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'll be real brief here. Ms. Logan, how are you, ma'am, from the east? And I don't want to get in that debate, but I'll share some things with you. One quick question. You think that's tough. We were suspended for a whole year for starting trouble out of the basketball league. We couldn't play any sports, so that was a tough punishment. Anyway, Donnie Johnson, the Johnson Question Foundation and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. The Peace Corps, we wanted to follow up on that. We want the OIC building and the US Mill building thirty of the names. When OPS finished with thirty of the names, my organization wants to build it for the Peace Corps. The Peace Corps shall and will provide many jobs for future generations for the African-American community. Looking back at President John Fitzgerald Kennedy and American Congress, President Kennedy and the United States Congress did not pass legislation for Peace Corps for wealthy, rich students and young, rich adults. He said all are allowed to participate, and he didn't say you must have a bachelor degree. The Ivy League changed this requirement to participate in the Peace Corps. While I say this, you find opportunities with many stories of successful program revenue and more job opportunities, the rules of the program change. Yet the job opportunities for North Omaha African-Americans and African-Americans living in the United States is in serious trouble and continue to get worse. We ask the school board to examine opportunities for graduates and young adults entering the Peace Corps for the city of Omaha and the state and federal government. Yet I hate to say this, young citizens in America are very much spoiled. I believe those entering the Peace Corps are witness citizen work day and night for the opportunity to come to America and become citizens of the United States of America. If they only knew why the world loved this country. For instance, before this year, before the year of nineteen sixty, many farms in the south had outhouses. Yet during this pandemic, COVID-19, number one complaint, bathroom tissue paper. I come from a farm, so I remember all that behavior, so I tell you. But to follow up, we want to keep track of you folks. So when you finish with that building down at the US Mill, when I came back from Nigeria, Ghana, and Egypt, I couldn't figure out how to pay for it. I finally have, after studying under, who is Dr. Lavichek, who ran the school board, and Mayor Leahy, they had lent. And I told Senator Chambers, I work with you if you stop to in God and to help us find some jobs. Have a good day.
Mr. Johnson, Mr. Johnson, could you provide your, spell your name and your provider address, please?
Donnie H. Johnson. Is it okay, because see Andrew Young, they had me at Creighton, me and him was talking, and he asked me what was my future address. I said, Mr. Andrew Young, they want me to talk to you, but I tell you this, sir. We're talking about revenue. He said if he wanted to look for me in the future, I told him I'd be up at Mars. Do you want me to give you that address? I'll give you forty-nine twenty-eight North Fifty-second Street.
Thank you so much. Have a good night. Next, we have Alex Gates.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Alex Gates, G A T E S. I live at 2612 North Ninety-seventh Avenue. I've got a first grader, a third grader, a seventh grader, and a ninth grader at OPS, and I'm here tonight to continue talking about the importance of parent and community involvement in our public school district. If you recall during the last board meeting, I spoke about the nineteen steps of stakeholder input and collaboration flow chart that has been shown repeatedly as proof that OPS responsibly and thoroughly collaborated with parents in the community when developing the academies and pathways programming. Recall that among the nineteen steps listed in the flow chart, the word "parents" appeared only twice. Once in reference to a July 2020 survey and the other in reference to a branding committee. By now, I hope that each of you had read the survey that was sent out on that morning, a Monday, July 6, 2020, and I hope you've read through all the responses. If so, you'd see the email was sent by Scott Schmidt-Bonney. The sender name wasn't OPS or Omaha Public Schools. It was Scott Schmidt-Bonney. If parents happened to open the email, they saw the following. Said Omaha Public Schools, as part of our recently approved strategic plan, is undergoing a process to establish career-connected learning in our high schools. As part of this strategy, we want to know how we are communicating the benefits of this hands-on learning approach with our students. In order to do so successfully, we need your honest opinion of our district today. The simple SWOT survey will help us gain an understanding of the current perception you have of our district. SWOT stands for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats facing an organization or a program. We will use your input as the first step in determining the best way to talk about our district, our career-connected learning initiatives, and their benefits for students, families, and staff, businesses, and community partners. It will only take a few minutes to complete. Pay attention to that. You sent this survey to figure out the best way to talk about the new academies and pathways. Instead of seeking parent input on academies and pathways programming, which program should be offered at which schools, how parents feel about block scheduling versus traditional scheduling, or how parents feel about well-rounded liberal arts versus career-centered instruction, you engage parents to help you learn how to market these changes to the broader community. You ask the following questions. What are the benefits of attending high school in Omaha Public Schools for students? What could our high schools do better? Are there any opportunities that our district should explore? What trends might harm the future of our high schools? Do you feel the district does a good job of communicating? Please enter your role as a constituent of the Omaha Public Schools. What are the best ways for our district to communicate with you? How familiar are you with the term "academy"? How familiar are you with the term "pathway"? Does the term "academy," what does the term "academy" give you a perception of? Which of these terms do you like best for referring to college and career-connected learning? For example, a health academy or a health institute? And that's it. And with that, and with a very tiny fraction of participation in the survey where most respondents seemed to really treat it as a COVID survey anyway, you feel as though this is all you need to do to engage parents and the community on significant changes at our high schools that will impact our community for years and years and years. And I'll add, with extreme irony in all of this, is that high school parents, by a wide margin, identified communication as the biggest weakness in Omaha Public Schools. Think about that. In this survey sent in the summer in the middle of a pandemic, not by Omaha Public Schools but by Scott Schmidt-Bonney, high school parents were very clearly told you, you need to do a better job communicating. Then, to make matters worse, you want to use this survey to prove to parents and the school board members that you in fact engaged parents thoroughly and thoughtfully when dramatically reshaping every single high school and Omaha Public Schools. It's really something. By rushing through these changes in the cover of a pandemic, you're telling parents and your constituents that their input does not matter and that you do not care what they think. By rushing these changes through, you are telling educators in OPS that they don't deserve the opportunity to catch their breath. By rushing through these changes, you're telling students, parents, that if a block schedule doesn't work for them, then OPS doesn't work for them. You're telling them to find a different school district. By rushing these changes through, you're telling Nebraska's that public schools can't offer choice to parents. By rushing through these changes, you are telling the public that they don't have a role in public schools. Is this really what you want? I hope not. It's not too late to do the right thing. Parents and community deserve to be involved in significant changes to our public school system. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kimberly Shaneyfelt.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Kimberly Shaneyfelt, and that is spelled K I M B E R L Y. Shaneyfelt, S H A N E Y F E L T. My address is 305 South Fifty-second Street. Thank you for listening to our concerns tonight. In the Professional Educational Journal, the Professional Journal for Education, from January 2019, Landford and Maruko shared their research from an urban Southern California school district on academies. They lay out six conditions for successful career academies. Condition number one. An identifiable workforce need and community interest. And I quote, "If the theme of an academy does not align with the interests and goals of students and parents, industry contacts are likely to be disappointed by student attrition after graduation and workforce-related outcome will suffer." Condition number two. A coordinator with multiple talents. Academies can struggle if there is not a strong leader or if a strong leader leaves. Condition number three. Meaningful and accessible internships. Too many internships are simply field trips. They provide neither training nor financial compensation. It's important to set up transportation for internships and scheduling. This can be complicated and a source of frustration if not addressed in the planning stage. Condition number four. A strong cohort of teachers. The workload for teachers is more intense in academies. Teachers will need frequent updates and continuous professional development with today's technology. Teachers will be asked to assume leadership roles even if they have no administrative training or prior experience. They will be undercompensated for their extra planning time and burnout is likely. May I add that the level of burnout from this past year is probably at an all-time high. Condition number five. Realistic assessment of size and scope. And I quote, "Larger academies are not able to offer meaningful work experiences or mentoring opportunities and may struggle to cultivate the family atmosphere that enables students to develop their academic abilities." End quote. They warn against implementing wall-to-wall academies in this study. Not every student benefits from being compelled to identify a career track at the age of thirteen or fourteen. And this is where I ask OPS to give students a choice. Not all OPS schools need to offer a pathway or an academy. Condition number six. Continuous funding. They warn that the initial startup is one thing, but to continuously fund is another consideration. In conclusion, they ask to carefully consider these six conditions, and they warn that the middle school and high school career education has the potential to perpetuate and possibly even exacerbate racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic inequalities due to tracking systems which separate students into high-ability groups that receive more academic instruction and low-ability groups that focus more on career education. After reading this article multiple times, I ask, do we have these things in place? Has the due diligence been done? Or has this been rushed? As you can tell from these six conditions laid out in this study, it is not advised to take on the big changes to switch to the academy style without proper preparation and attention to detail. I would also like to add a reminder to read Marion Fay's thoughtful email from January 21, 2021, and to kindly respond to her. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Dan Rock.
Good evening.
Good evening. Dan Rock, 307 South Fifty-third Street, R O C K. Dr. Logan and the board and the staff that are here, thank you for your dedicated work to our schools. I am here to participate and humbly give you my feedback from my perspective. I apologize. Perhaps I missed it. Maybe I did get the email, but I don't remember the survey coming out at all. I think only six percent responded though, so I'm in a larger group. So I wanted to let you know our thoughts. As I understand the policy, 6121 requires a vote to be taken on this adoption of a major curriculum revision as the prior vote did not include these proposals. And it sounds like there might be new information tonight, so my remarks might be outdated quickly here. On block scheduling, I've heard it's a good thing because it's like a college schedule. But in college, you don't go to school from eight to four. You only take two or three classes a day, and sometimes you have long breaks between those classes to give your brain a break. I think it's a long time to sit for fourteen-year-olds. Generations of students have had the nine passing periods in school, and Omaha is pretty successful. I don't think a little extra hall time has hurt us. I've had a couple of kids graduate from OPS, and they typically had zero-hour classes or no study halls or no lunch hours so they could take more classes during the day that they were interested in. And I think this proposal would limit their ability to choose those extra classes. On the academies, I don't see anything that's broken. I've not heard what problem we're trying to solve. I've heard that this is to improve graduation rates. I think we might be smarter than that, though. I think we could create a plan to focus on the fifteen percent that's not graduating as compared to a plan that affects the eighty-five percent that are. If that is the problem we're trying to fix, it is not a problem for the eighty-five percent of students that are graduating, but it will greatly affect them and perhaps give that eighty-five percent a problem that they don't have now. The focus, I think, should be on academics, knowledge, not graduation. You know, we could fix graduation rates real easy. We could say anybody that shows up graduates, no matter if you learned anything or not. There, the problem's solved, but that's not the goal. Schools should be about learning. The plan, I think, is based upon this Tennessee model, and you've probably seen those schools' success reports on a standardized test. Their Antioch School was at seven percent. Cambridge, nine percent. Glenn Cliff, five percent. Hillsboro, twenty-four percent. Hillwood, sixteen percent. On and on. Their scores are much lower than ours. That's not a model we want to follow. We want rigorous academics for our kids. Let me, I have a student, a daughter, going to high school next year. She's excited. But let me tell you about my other daughter. She started in French, and she didn't like it, so she switched to Latin, and she loves it. But she thinks learning Gaelic might be even better. She started in choir, then she decided to play an instrument, so she got a baritone. Then she decided to play trombone, so we got a trombone. My wife's a nurse, so she thought nursing might be fun, and she enjoyed ballet class. And then she started reading a lot of religious books and wanted to take World Religions, and she wanted to be a nun. Then she thought about Omaha History Class because she wants to get a fancy camera and take photos of churches and make a history book because being a religious historian would really be fun. Then she started sewing and making dresses and on and on. She's changed her interest on and on. This plan would not help her. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rock. Next, we have Gina Miller. Good evening, Ms. Miller.
Gina Miller, I am Mr. Heads District, and I am here this evening to speak about the academies and pathways. In course, to save all of your time and energy, first of all, I agree with all of the parents up here. I don't think any of the parents, I don't think many of the board members believe that anybody has been engaged in this process. And when you see the survey, when you see the survey results, when you see the questions that were asked specifically, and that is what you're basing your parent engagement on, that's pretty concerning. When you look at the parent feedback forums and the number of questions that were asked on those forums that were never answered to the parents and I think still may not have ever been answered, that's really concerning. When you have a board workshop and you have two board members, one who is a previous board president and one who I know has sat for the last year while she was running for this seat, asking, how did we get here? That's pretty concerning. this seat, asking, "How did we get here?", that's pretty concerning. How do we have board members that don't know how we got here? Board members that have been on the board for a long period of time? Board members that have been very engaged in the community and in the school systems? This group of parents here are some of the most engaged parents I have ever met in my life in any school district, which I have been, and I work across the school districts. We don't know what's going on. We don't know why it's going on. We are not engaged, and if we're not engaged, our kids are not going to be engaged. And that comes back on you. When this superintendent does or does not stay, is successful or is not successful with this mission, you know who's not going to remember this superintendent's name? It's going to be the board member's name that is on this achievement or lack thereof. We have played this graduation rate game so many times in OPS. How many times have we all talked about graduation rates? How many times has this district lowered graduation rates or standards in order to increase graduation rates? Graduation rates are not the metrics we should be looking for here, folks. We should be looking for achievement. If we're taking this model, and you've already heard some of the Tennessee reports, please go out to the Tennessee Department of Education and look at those reports. It is scary. Their graduation rates after a large number of years are just barely where we are now. So what are we gaining from this model? I just would really like you all to thoughtfully consider and at some point start asking as a board member, what is my responsibility as a board member? When do I put my foot down and say I need a vote on something in this district? It is time that the board start standing up and asking to take a vote, a public vote, for your constituents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved by Mr. Tealyn and second by Mr. Smith. Any abstentions?
Yes, President Holman, I have to abstain from item I-6. Claim C report, please. Thank you for the reminder.
Thank you. We have an abstention by Mrs. Cassidy, claim report C. Roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Erdenberger.
Yes.
Head.
Yes.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipes.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Nine I.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item J-1A, approval of report of their legislative committee including recommended legislative positions. Mr. Head.
Thank you, President Dr. Holman. So we have five new positions that we're recommending the board take this week, so I'll go through those five real quick. The first one, LB-200, that creates a high school graduation requirement that students must complete and submit to FAFSA in order to graduate. We would like to recommend that we change our position on this bill from monitor with research to neutral. That's on page 12 of the attached report. LB-550, it changes the amount of times option enrollment is available for each student from one time to five times prior to graduation. We are recommending we take the position of opposed. That's page 25 of the report. LB-651 proposes to terminate the option enrollment program effective July 1st, 2022. We are recommending the monitor with research position. That's page 30. LB-681 proposes to expand the state's college savings plan to allow for savings plans and trusts to be created for students at elementary and secondary schools in addition to post-secondary education institutions, and re-names it the education savings plan. We're recommending an opposition position on this one, page 32. And LR-21CA, which is a proposed constitutional amendment, that would have the state of Nebraska pay for all classroom expenses related to the operation of public and secondary schools. We're recommending an opposition position to that bill. It's page 33. Outside of that, we've had a little bit of activity since the last meeting. Last week, we submitted a letter of support for LB-5, the Purple Star Schools Act. We had Ilka Oberst, the principal at Liberty Elementary, testified in support of LB-396, the farm-to-school program. Dr. Logan testified on all of the OSERS bills last week. And then, let's see, LR-21CA, as I mentioned above, we also submitted opposition testimony Outside of that, we are in the final week of hearings, so hopefully the committee's work will start dying down a little bit here. We're just over a third of the way through the legislative session. We have a little bit of movement on a couple of bills that we've been watching as well. So LB-408 is the 3% cap on political subdivision property tax requests. That was voted out of committee last week. It hasn't been reported to general file yet, but we understand there is a committee amendment on that, so we're keeping an eye on that, and hopefully we'll have more discussion shortly. LB-288, which delays the certification date to TOS, it's June 10th, is still on select file, as is LB-323, which is the TOS pandemic relief. And outside of that, the state forecasting board met last Friday. They anticipate an additional $95 million in, let's see, income tax receipts to the state, $65 million in sales tax, and $40 million in corporate tax, and $4 million in miscellaneous taxes for the quarter, it looks like. So it looks like the state's in good fiscal position. With that, I would make a motion to accept the legislative committee report as given.
There is a motion on the floor. Okay, it was moved by Mr. Head and second by Vice President Erdenberger. Okay, roll call, Mr. Ray.
Head.
Yes.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipes.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Nine I.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on to information items, J-2A, update to policies 3090 and 7000. Mr. Snow.
Thank you, President Dr. Holman. Every board member, you've received a copy of the two policies that our committee has discussed in Policy Committee. The first one is business operations, which is 3090, which is in response to legislation that was passed, I believe, a year ago that went into action, which changes the surplus of property, which is sales of textbooks and equipment for the district. Requires 2/3 of a vote. We did change that in here, so if you read that first page here, it talks about the board may authorize the superintendent his or her designated to dispose of books, furniture, equipment, or the property. Any sale of property is contingent upon approval of 2/3 of the board. We did make that change there. This is an information item. So if you have any questions or anything like that, please email myself, the superintendent, Mr. Ray, or Dr. Holman, or anybody on the committee in retrospect there. Moving on to the next one on here is information, is policy 7000, and this is talking about the naming of facilities. And I believe Vice President Erdenberger is going to take this piece here because we're going to make a slight move change than what the document you have in front of you. Can everybody hear me? Because I talk really softly.
Okay, I'm looking at policy number 7000 on the very last page of the packet we got. The change that we had discussed in the Policy Committee was that the board must approve all OPS school building and facility names. And then it says, "No new OPS school building or other new OPS facility," the word "new" is "new," "will be named for a living individual." And that's basically the crux of the change that we're making. I have, I'm suggesting that instead of a reference to the word "new," basically cross off the word "new," so that sentence would read, "Instead, no OPS school building or other OPS facility," insert the language, "acquired or put into use after April 5, 2021." April 5 would be the date that this policy would ultimately be voted on. And the point is that it may or may not be a new piece of property, but if we are acquiring it and putting it into use after that date, then it will not be named after a living person. Just so you note, one other change we made in the same paragraph was that OPS will not, and I'm not making any changes to this, OPS will not accept title to a building or other facility donated to OPS by a third party where one of the conditions of the transfer to OPS is that the building or facility or portion thereof be named for a specific person, period. So on a going-forward basis, the point is, is that we won't be having our buildings named after people. They will be named after something else, trees.
Does that make sense to everybody? So what we'll do is that piece there, we'll send out a new, actually, we'll email this out, a copy of 7000s with a correct line item here and redlined for you, the corrections from Mrs. Erdenberger. So look for that. Hopefully, if we can send it out tomorrow, we can send it out tomorrow, and everybody can just review it. And also remember, this will come back up in front of the board as an action item, and then for a first reading, and then it'll also come up as a second reading. So everybody will have a chance, if you have any questions or anything like that, to weigh in. Please, again, don't hesitate to reach out. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Moving on to J-2B, Dr. McFarland, information on proposed high school student assignment
Good evening. There we go. Good evening, President Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, members of the board, Dr. Logan. We are here this evening to present as information the district's recommendation on the high school student assignment plan. Over the past several months, we have reviewed data, shared information with several stakeholder groups, gathered feedback, and drafted a plan that we are presenting regarding recommended changes to the student assignment plan. Policy 5005 defines the assignment of students to schools upon enrollment in the Omaha Public Schools. This policy identifies the placement of students to schools in their attendance area, or as we call, their neighborhood schools, unless the student is placed in a non-neighborhood school in accordance with the student assignment plan. At its core, the student assignment plan provides guidance in placing students in a non-neighborhood school. It defines eligibility for non-neighborhood transportation, and it also determines prioritization for the school choice process. With the opening of our two new high schools in the 2022-23 school year, the school boundaries, the changes in school boundaries that have been approved for implementation in August of 2022, and for aligning to the elementary and middle school student assignment plans, district administration is proposing changes to the high school plan. The first proposed change is for neighborhood transportation eligibility. Currently, neighborhood transportation eligibility is provided to three of our current seven high schools, North, Northwest, and South High School. Students are only eligible for neighborhood transportation at the three schools if they are attending the high school in their attendance area and live more than three miles from the school. There are close to 1,700 students eligible under this plan. One of the responses we heard consistently throughout the plan development process was the desire for some form of neighborhood transportation at all of our high schools. Our proposal for neighborhood transportation recommends that. On this slide, you will see that we have created neighborhood transportation areas at all nine of our high schools, starting in 2022-23. Knowing that resources are finite, we designed eligibility that identified a similar number of eligible students, and we wanted to make it equitable by applying that across the district according to a proportional model. Knowing that high school attendance areas are of different sizes, density, and the location of the school is in different areas in each attendance area, we created eligible areas with a similar number of students to the current plan that lived, that make eligible those students who live furthest from the school. Under this model, students residing in the neighborhood transportation areas would be eligible for district-provided transportation. Using Northwest as the example you see on the screen, students that reside in the shaded area on the map is where neighborhood students would be eligible for transportation to their neighborhood school of Northwest. However, students that reside in the gray area on the map that you see would not be eligible for neighborhood transportation to Northwest. The second proposed change is for non-neighborhood transportation. We reviewed several different possibilities for providing transportation to non-neighborhood schools. We eventually settled on a model that is very similar to the elementary and middle school zone plans. We reviewed and vetted numerous different school zone combinations. From the perspective of student demographics, building capacities, staff utilization, and programming, what we propose, we believe, is one of the strongest combinations of schools from those perspectives. Not one that is perfect for any one perspective, but one that is really best when considering all of the metrics. This plan groups Burke, North, and South into Zone 1, Central, Benson, and 156th and Ida into Zone 2, and Northwest, Bryan, and 60th and L into Zone 3. In this model, a student is eligible for transportation to the two schools that are in their zone opposite their neighborhood school. However, we wanted to provide one additional choice for all students. So we identified an additional school for each student. So on the map, you will see for Burke, we added Northwest; for North, we added 156th and Ida; for South, we added Bryan; for Central, we added 60th and L; for Benson, we added Burke; for 156th and Ida, we added North; for Northwest, we added Benson; for Bryan, we added South; and for 60th and L, we added Central. Now, we have identified both the zone schools and the additional schools as partner schools, where students are eligible to attend with transportation. The final change that we're proposing in the high school student assignment plan is the prioritization of students in the school choice process. Each year in January, our eighth-grade students receive high school information and have the opportunity to visit all of our high schools through the open house process in advance of completing their in advance of completing their school choice application. Students may identify up to three schools in the choice process. They identify them as Choice 1, 2, and 3. Now, because there are not enough seats available at all of our schools for each student to receive their first choice in every case, we run a lottery, weighting the applications based on a priority structure. Beginning in 2022-23, we are proposing that the lottery prioritize first neighborhood students, as it does currently, ensuring that all students are guaranteed placement in their neighborhood school should they choose to attend. The second group for prioritization would be students who have siblings at the school. This is also our current practice as we want to give families the option to keep their students in the same school community. The third group for prioritization would be students who are applying to a partner school where they would be eligible for district-provided transportation. We realize that transportation is a resource that is needed by many of our families, and we want to prioritize that choice above students who are applying to a school that they would not be eligible for transportation. Finally, any remaining applications would be an open lottery for remaining seats. So our next steps. Our next steps include coming back to you at the next board meeting on March 15 to request action on the student assignment plan proposal. And then the real work begins after adoption. As we have just completed our school choice process for the next year, Mr. Hughes from Research has had the opportunity to conduct a preliminary review of the results, including the addresses and school placements for next year's ninth, 10th, and 11th grade students. While there is no change to transportation eligibility for the next year, 2021-22, these are the students who will be enrolled in high school when we implement a new student assignment plan in the August of 2022. Now, while we don't have exact numbers of all of students that potentially will be impacted by the change in plan because our transportation division will not be routing students until this summer, Mr. Hughes, in his review, estimated high by looking at all students who could be eligible. And he has identified up to 2,200 students that may be impacted by a new plan. We plan to begin immediately after adoption by collaborating with our colleagues in district communications to develop a communication plan and toolkits to assist our staff in communicating directly with families. We will continue to update our resources and post them on our student assignment plan website at sap OPS dot org. And that will include the search engine we have where a family can put in the grade and their address, and they will be able to determine their eligibility in advance of implementation of the plan. In April, through implementation in August of 2022, we will educate our community about the plan, and we will collaborate to identify resources to support families. Much as we did ahead of implementation of the elementary and the middle school plan, we will identify those families who will be impacted and begin direct communication with them. Now, look, we know there is a lot to communicate, including a new student assignment plan, the College and Career Academy and Pathway Programming Update, as well as community resources to support our families. Providing all of this information directly to families will assist them to make the best decision for their child and their situation. In February of 2022, students will have an opportunity again to participate in the school choice process. And we will continue to run our student transfer, our school transfer process throughout the year, making sure that all of our families are aware of the changes that will be coming and how they will impact school placement and access to district-provided transportation. Going forward, we will continue to monitor and support to see how our families are adapting to the plan. We want to maintain diverse learning environments in all of our schools. We believe we have set up a plan that will do just that. However, we want to make sure, by looking at the impact on school choice patterns, student and school populations, and make adjustments where needed. Thank you. We are available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, board members? Mr. Thielman?
Thank you. Can you just highlight for me one more time the, on the prioritization, those first two priorities, why those were chosen and why those are important?
So our first priority is neighborhood because we do want to guarantee, and as the policy currently identifies, that students are eligible for placement in their neighborhood school or the school in their attendance area. We want to support that. The second one is for siblings. And because families have been in schools and have a connection to that school community, we want to be able to prioritize that for their siblings as well. It helps, too, we have families with multiple, you heard this evening, families with multiple children in high school at the same time. It's helpful to support our families to be able to make that decision for their family. We do have families that will choose not to have their students in the same school. But again, prioritizing that as a family's choice.
Mr. Head?
Thank you, President Holman. So I guess I still have the same concern that we talked about a little bit last week. And that's, and I think one of the speakers earlier tonight might have mentioned it with, you know, the new programming essentially taking all nine high schools to, you know, offer all of it. But students really only have guaranteed access to one school, and then, you know, hopefully, three others with transportation, depending on availability. So do we believe that with this transportation plan, and granted, you know, it's not really possible to give every student transportation to every school, but are we guaranteeing every student equal access to all programming?
So even today, not all students have access to all programming in the Omaha Public Schools. I think about half of our high school students attend their neighborhood school. And so that's a choice that, in general, those families are making. The other half are choosing to attend a non-neighborhood school. We're able to place approximately 80% of those families who are kind of choosing a first, second, or third choice in one of those choice schools. But we're not able to place every student who wants a school that's not their neighborhood school into one of those programs. So under today's plan, you know, we're not able to give access to any given program to every student. And so this plan would, I guess, continue what we're doing today, which is trying to allow for as much choice as possible. We really do kind of, we have to work on the voluntary choice of families. If we think about it as a big game of musical chairs, unless students are getting up from one attendance area and going to another school, then it's difficult to place students at that school. So in our boundary process, we really tried to develop attendance areas that were appropriately sized to our schools and balance those out so that if there is movement between schools, we can place those students. So it attempts to do as much of that choice as possible, understanding that there's not a situation where every student could get to any given program in the district.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it. And one, one more thing, and I know we talked about this last week, too, but representing, you know, a portion of the district that's in the new high school area that's between Burke and Northwest now, I'd still love to see, you know, some more in the plan if those kids could get priority to return to the school that they're currently in, if there's, if there's room.
So we're definitely continuing to, to look at what we can do moving forward. Our first step is really going to be communicating with those families, especially those, those families that are coming in a ninth grade, what that 10th grade year looks like. And so that does include a lot of those families that are transitioning to the new high school. You know, there are lots of different opportunities for, for school movement, the school transfer process. And so we're going to, we're going to look at those student situations, look at how our current plan is going to be prioritized or our future plan potentially will prioritize students. You know, for, for instance, if a student is a sibling, and they have a sibling that is going to be in an upper grade at, let's say, Northwest, and they want to remain at Northwest, they could attempt to get back into that school under our school selection process and be prioritized just under those neighborhood students. The only real caveat is that when we're going to open up two new high schools, we're going to have to shift our staffing. And so it's not like if we, if we're moving, you know, 100 students out of a school to one of the new schools that there's going to be 100 seats left because that staff, those resources, they have to, to some degree, move with those students. But during that selection process, we'll do everything we can to place students at their choices, given the, you know, the limits we have in terms of space and, and resources.
Thank you.
I would just add that, as I said, we have a lot of information to share. And I think we're going to see a school selection process or a school choice process in this next year different than we've ever seen before because we're opening up two schools at the same time that we're implementing a lot of great resources for our students and opportunities. And so we anticipate that there's going to be much higher choice this next year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Vice President Erdenberger?
I just want to anticipate a concern that I know several people have expressed, and that is the number that your estimate on the high side was that 2,000 students will not, in the process, have the same transportation rights that they have right now. We've talked about that, and I was just hoping you, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to explain again how you did that with the elementary and middle schools because it sounded to me like you probably talked to each of the families at that time and the sorts of things you do to make that as seamless a situation as possible.
Well, thank you for that question. And yes, as I said, we will be identifying with district communications our systemic plan. But we will also be hiring staff to work in the summer that will be making, once we can identify the students that are impacted based on the plan, making direct phone calls to those families and having conversations. At the same time, we'll be training our staff in the schools as families come into the schools to also be having those conversations. Our school counselors, our school secretaries, our administrators, everybody is going to need an education on this plan so that they can help families to resolve their issues.
I think my next observation is for Mr. Hughes, and that is, you described this as a musical chairs kind of a thing. And I know that one of your ultimate goals was, and it looked on some of the charts that you've presented us, that you achieved some evenness of diversity. I'm not even sure how to describe that. But that's something else that I think that people need to appreciate about this plan is that we have managed to, or you have managed to, we'll take credit for it, though, because we have to vote on it, that you've managed to create a system and pods of schools that end up with a good allocation of all the various diversities we have in our, in our district so that each school is as diverse as another. And I think that's a, that's a real goal that we have, and I commend you for being able to accomplish that. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. We definitely worked very hard on trying to have that as kind of a base level for our high school plan. So thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions? Thank you both for much, for the presentation tonight. Moving on.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. Moving on to Budget Audit Committee update, item J2C, Mr. Snow.
Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Holman. I'm going to start off with our, one second. First, if I may invite Mr. Scott Roberts up to help assist me in some of the things I might miss off. I'm just going to kind of give like a 150,000-foot level of review, but this is my first time as board chair, so I'm going to need some help from the expert and the guru himself. So, and then also, some things that probably he'll be able to clarify a little bit better. So we did some internal control issues. We had some internal control issues as, in our department, Finance Department, and we did clear some of those things up, if not majority of all. And Mr. Roberts, I believe, material weakness, and we had a significant deficiency. Could you elaborate on what we've done, and especially with the new auditor, and as well as correcting some of those pieces there?
Sure. One of our deficiencies last year was in regards to capital asset reporting. So we engaged an Accenture consultant to come out and help us review the system. Long story short, we've been able to replicate about 1,400 of the 1,500 errors that we had last year. So we've identified and isolated the problem. So we've now fixed that and moved forward. Financial reporting was really a factor of our staffing levels last year. We had about a 25% vacancy rate in the critical months of July, August, and September, right at the end of the year. And that caused us to accelerate or move less than prudently through the year-end close process. And so we've now staffed up to the levels that we've needed. We've retrained, cross-trained some staff. We've also added some additional processes and procedures that allow us to pull procedures related to year-end close into earlier periods in the year. So it takes some pressure off year-end.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Also, in our committee, we talked, went over the timeline for our next, our third tranche of bonds. And as you remember, the rating confirmation, I believe, is March 5, as well as the published notice of the offering. The bond sale will be March 10 and 11, which would be, the final terms would be that day as well. And then settlement of proceeds would be April 8. And Mr. Roberts, could you explain a little bit more about the 2015 bond refi opportunity?
Sure. We've got a early opportunity to refi our 2015 bonds. The original par value of those bonds was approximately, approximately it was $141 million. Interest rates are significantly more favorable now. So with an early call provision, should say, we typically have a no-call provision for 10 years. So this would be an early call. It would allow us to refi those bonds with taxable bonds. And the projected savings with current market conditions is between $10 and $12 million. That would be something that we would propose to take on this fall or early next year.
So be, expect when we start doing our bond process that this will come up again in the conversation. We did talk about the S or 2 funds and that, if I'm correct, Mr. Roberts, we're going to hold off on what we're going to allocate those funds for and as a recommendation, or what the district plans to spend those funds on until we figure out what is allowable under that umbrella. It's a pretty big umbrella, but we have some other funds that we have to spend through first. And before we get to that, we want to make sure that all our Ts are crossed and our Is are dotted because I believe it is $86.4 million. So this can go into projects that are undone, whether additional bond projects that we want to do or curriculum. I know Dr. Logan has talked about having our summer programming, our summer learning program be extended for the next three, four years. So when they actually kind of get those dollars and those dollar amounts to the board, we'll be able to bring back to us so we can accurately explain that to our constituents as well as understand for ourselves. I want to go to the budget timeline, which is probably the biggest thing here. So I'm just going to read the timeline here and some of the milestones here. I believe HR is going to be making some updates, staffing changes and stuff by the 15th of March. We should have our valuations by April 15. And the first round of budgets for, that we would know about will be by, if I'm correct, June 21st, if Mr. Roberts. And then mid to late August, have some budget workshops. My hope is to be able to have a conversation with Mr. Roberts so we can have some of these meetings a little bit earlier so board members could be well-versed in our budget as we start going through the timeline here. And then by late August, have our budget finalized. And then our hearing, which we did discuss to a significant length of having our budget hearing because of the new state statute, having our budget hearing the same day of the approval of the budget or having it separate. And I believe we are going to actually put that with board officers and the entire board to see if we have our budget hearing the same day that we actually approve our budget. If you're familiar with our budget process in the past, we usually have the budget hearing 30 minutes before. But right now, we don't have a time limit because the state statute allows an individual to speak to a certain amount of time of his or her, their choosing. And I believe there's just a question on, how long does the actual budget meeting go, board meeting go if someone shows up at the board table and decides to speak for 30 minutes about the OPS budget? I don't think that will happen, but you never know. I don't think that will happen, but you never know, and you always have to be prepared. I believe the budget approval, the budget is set to be approved by September 8th?
Subject to board approval.
By September 8th, and the filing deadline with Douglas and Sarpy County is the 20th of that.
Correct. That's a hard date.
That's a hard date. So if we think of that as that's the hard date, and we want to actually have more people well-versed in this, we start from that date and start working backwards. So, as you know, I am new in this role, and Mr. Roberts is going to be assisting me as best to his ability, and I really want everyone to be as engaged as possible because this is something that is very, a heavy lift for the board, and I want to make sure that our constituents know that we are going through every line item, whether it's in our regular general fund or additional ESSER funds that we receive from the federal government, and that we're making sure that we're thinking of every student every day and making sure that they prepare for success. This is a quick update. I'm going to actually ask Mr. Roberts, if you can, send that PowerPoint that you sent the committee to the entire board, if you may, or Dr. Logan, and if you have any questions from there, we can go from there. Thank you. That's all I have, actually. There's some more things in there, but some of the stuff is like a little bit detailed.
You hit the major parts. Good job.
Thank you.
Vice President Erdenberger?
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm something I thought I heard you say, that the 2015 bonds which were tax-exempt are being refied with taxable?
Subject to board approval.
But the taxable rate is less than what the old tax exemption rate was? Oh, my gosh. Okay. That's amazing.
Yeah, markets in great shape right now, and rates are extremely low, so we'll take advantage of the opportunity, subject to board approval.
Now, if taxable rates are less than our old tax exempt, why are we not refin with tax exempt, which would presumably be even lower, or is that just not, is there no market for that?
It's not possible for an early call like this. They have to be done with taxable bonds, or otherwise we have to wait till the 10-year call provision to use tax rate.
Got it. Forgot that part. Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions? I don't know which one of you cleared the room, but...
It's probably me.
Thank you both.
Thank you so much.
And we have six receipt of reports. K1, report of the Head Start Annual Report to the Public, 2019-2020. K2, Report of Head Start Community Assessment, 2020-2021 Update. K3, Report of Head Start Monthly Governance Body Report, January 21. K4, Economic Conclusion Update. K5, Implementation of Black Board Mass Notifications, Website and Family Mobile App. K6, Second Quarter Board Conference Expenses, 2020-2021. And now, moving on to closed session, Vice President Ergenberger.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel, negotiations, pending litigation, legal advice, and real estate.
Is there a second? Okay, it has been moved by Vice President Erdenberger, and second by Ms. Crackey. Roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipes.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Teeman.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Ed.
Aye.
Nine, nine.
Motion carries. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel, negotiations, pending litigation, legal advice, and real estate. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 8:19 PM.
Let the record reflect that the board came out of closed session at 8:49 PM. Meeting adjourned.